Meeting of December the ninth, twenty twenty five. For those of you out in the hall that can't hear, we'll talk louder. I hope we get everybody in here in just a few minutes. We're gonna have a roll call to establish presidents of, presidents of quorum, Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four. Mayor here. Council member and Mayor Pro Tem Hatman has the flu. I got a text message from her just a while ago or she would be here. Join us if you would for the sake of pleasure allegiance with Councilman Anderson.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, to the republic, to the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. I don't have any cards that have been brought to me by anyone wanting to speak. Has anyone got in here and you didn't turn it in or you changed your mind or whatever? Any citizens wishing to be heard? If not, we'll go on to other things. First time ceremonial matters, proclamations, employee recognition, so forth. Twenty twenty five Rockport Citizen University graduation certificates. I've got a stack of certificates here. I'm gonna read off your name and if you are here, if you'll come up here and stand, I'll get them all read out, we'll come around and get a picture taken. We're gonna get a lot of photos up here shortly. Kate Alexander. Are you here? Barry Hill Senior. They already got these once, so there we go. Sandra Little Pfeiffer. Tracy Ramsey Bennett. Laura Gurlich Flanagan. We have encouraged people over the last several years, and I've been around for a bunch of them, to get involved in what goes on in city government. And part of what that entails is people learning something about what it is we do. And our city secretary came up with the idea of having a city university, which means people will come down here and learn over a period of time what we do and how we do it. So if you have questions about it and you can't find one of us, ask them because they know, they said learn about this. I'm going to get these back with the city secretary and we will get them to y'all individually because I don't have everybody. But if those of you that are carrying cameras and phones, you want to get pictures, we are real proud of this group of people and look forward to the time that they will graduate and could have a ceremony on right now.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Just a little bit, see if you get the flag and the whole thing in the background.
Act like you like each other.
Mayor, we do have another citizen university coming up. Is it, do you know if it's full or if the applications are still open?
Kimberly?
I believe they're still taking applications, sir.
Okay. So if anybody's interested in the twenty twenty six Citizens University for the City of Rockport, we're accepting applications. I think it's free.
It's free. We meet monthly, or I say they meet monthly, the staff, we meet with them on our designated month. But yes, it's a monthly meeting typically in the evenings, but there are some events that do take place during the day depending on the activity.
And all that information is on the city website, so if anybody's interested, come check it out. Thank you.
And you get a real nice dinner when it's over with. Okay, next item, proclamation proclaimed December fourteenth, twenty twenty five is the official centennial of the Aransas County Navigation District. Is anyone from the Nav District here? I'll read this and we'll get it to them. Whereas the Aransas County Navigation District has played a vital role in the economy, culture, and development of Aransas County for a hundred years, and whereas the district as established by the voters of Aransas County on December seventh, nineteen twenty five, and formerly created by order of the Aransas County Commissioners Court on December fourteenth, nineteen twenty five, and whereas Travis Bailey, Charles T. Pickton, and A.C. Glass were appointed as the first navigation and canal commissioners by an order of Commissioners Court of Aransas County, and whereas the Texas Legislature subsequently changed the name of the district to the Aransas County Navigation District, and whereas over the past century, the district has developed and maintained seawalls, breaker waters, marinas, harbors, waterways, parks, public amenities, cultural facilities, and Rockport Beach, strengthening public safety, supporting tourism, and enhancing quality of life for residents and visitors, and whereas the district continues to provide vital environmental, recreational, educational, and economic benefits to Rockport and the surrounding area, and whereas the Aransas County Navigation District will celebrate its centennial with its special events throughout twenty twenty five, twenty six. Now therefore, be it so that I, Tim Jarrow, manager, mayor of the city of Rockport, Texas, proudly proclaim December fourteenth, twenty twenty five, as centennial of Aransas County Navigation District, and encourage all residents and visitors to participate in and enjoy the celebrations marking this historic milestone, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed on this ninth day of December twenty twenty five, and if they're not here, we'll get this to them. Now we've got a crowd coming up here. Next is proclamation proclaimed December as Pirate Pride Appreciation Month. I'd like to tell all you young folks out here, I'm glad that you're here. We'd like to have more of y'all come down and visit with us from time to time, but I said it at a bunch of your ballgames, and I have never been quite as proud of a group. I've been proud of others too, but y'all fought really hard this year. And coming from somebody whose senior year in high school, we lost every game we played. I'm really impressed with y'all. So I appreciate y'all being here. I'm gonna read this and I'm gonna ask all of you that want to to come up, we're proud to have you here, cheerleaders, everybody had anything to do with athletics at the school, we really appreciate you. Whereas the Rockport Fulton community is home to exceptional students who display remarkable dedication, discipline, talent, and school spirit throughout the year, and whereas Rockport Fulton Pirates Football Team completed an impressive season demonstrating perseverance, sportsmanship, and a commitment to excellence that united our community in support and pride, and whereas the Rockport Fulton Middle School Cheerleaders showed outstanding spirit and leadership representing Pirate Nation with enthusiasm and earning fourth place in the USC competition along with a bid to Orlando, Florida, and whereas four members of the Rockport Fulton High School Emerald Dance Team earned prestigious honor of performing the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, showcasing their hard work and talent on a national stage and bringing tremendous pride to Rockport Fulton, and whereas Rockport Fulton Band elevated every game, event, and performance with exceptional music, talent, discipline, and dedication contributing greatly to the spirit and energy of Pirate Nation, and whereas the accomplishments of these students would not be possible without the unwavering support of parents, families, teachers, coaches, directors, and loyal fans who fill the stands and cheer on our youth year after year, and whereas Pirate Pride continues to shine brightly throughout our schools and our community, reminding us that teamwork, determination, and unity strengthen Rockport Fulton both on and off the field. Therefore, I, Tim Jarrow, mayor of the city of Rockport, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of December as Pirate Pride Appreciation Month in the city of Rockport, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing these outstanding achievements, their success and spirit reflect the heart of Pirate Nation, the strength of our community, and the continued accomplishments yet to come as the school year isn't over yet. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city be affixed this ninth day of December twenty twenty five. We have a lot of things in our town to be very thankful for, and it's a great place to live. I thank you. I love 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 you.
Mayor, I need to embarrass my cousin. She's a fourth generation cheerleader for Brannan County High Schools. Her mother, grandmother, great grandmother are all cheerleaders of Brannan County. Kennedy.
Yeah, you can. It's like our.
Yeah, she's gone.
Good job, good job.
We'll wait till they get out because they probably aren't interested in the rest of Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Following items may be acted upon in a single motion. No separate discussion or action on any of these items will be held unless pulled from at the request of a council member. Does anyone want to pull any of those? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash forty nine R, amending resolution twenty twenty five dash ten R, adopting an updated personnel policies manual, amending section one, division four compensation and benefits, and amending section one, division eleven, post-employment, as set forth in exhibit A attached herein in providing an effective date. Ms. Heavens, is she here?
Sir, that was on consent agenda, so she did not stick around for that because it was on consent agenda and y'all already.
Okay. Yeah. That was part of the consent agenda. I didn't skip down far enough. Ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Consider approval of first and only reading ordinance nineteen ninety six authorizing the issuance of approximately five million, one hundred thousand dollars in principal amount of City of Rockport, Texas tax note, series twenty twenty five, for number one, planning, constructing, improving, repairing streets, sidewalks, bridges, and drainage improvements, together with right-of-way acquisition, traffic and streets, signalization, landscaping, and lighting improvements. Number two, acquiring equipment vehicles for various city constructing, improving, and equipment departments, including Public Works and Building Development Department, acquiring facilities for the volunteer fire department, acquiring, constructing, improving, and equipping wastewater treatment facilities, parks, or recreational facilities, purchasing real property, materials, supplies, equipment, machinery, buildings, land, and right-of-way for authorization needs and purposes related to the aforementioned capital improvements, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase letter, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto Mr. Sorel.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, sir, you said that very well. These, this is the twenty twenty five tax notes that got delayed because we needed to get the twenty twenty four audit done. Thankfully, that's done. But this will be used to support the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. Some of the capital items included were the streets, I won't list them all, but they do include the Austin streets, design work, and then water streets, Magnolia Market Streets. It does include cost of issuance, which came out to be about about sixty eight thousand dollars, not the hundred that we had in there, but we wanted to make sure to cover that. Also, the reimbursement resolution for the work done on the volunteer fire department, the fleet equipment, shelter work, belt press, and purple pipe to Memorial Park. Those were the items that were included to be supported by this. There is only, as you said, there's only one reading needed for issuing debt from the state of Texas. These are, again, seven-year notes. The pricing, Bob was gracious enough to drive down today, and he, they were very, they dealt with the pricing and with the bidding and stuff. I don't know if you wanted to speak to any of that.
Well, I would just point out that.
Thank you, sir.
For the record, my name is Robert Henderson, I'm the managing director with RBC Capital Markets, and we have the privilege and the honor of working with the city of Rockport as our financial advisor with respect to capital improvement funding. What I would, I would just add that we took the bids at eleven o'clock this morning, we got five different banks that submitted bids, and we actually had about eleven bids. And what happened was that each of these banks, or most of these banks, submitted different bids depending on what kind of call features that we would have in the, in the transaction. The lowest bid was three point three zero percent. As a non-callable structure, had lengthy conversations with the director of finance about the likelihood of, of, of ever needing to call these things, and if you did, where was the cash going to come from? You'd have higher coupon debt outstanding elsewhere, so if you did have some cash, you'd pay off, you'd probably pay off the other higher interest rate debt. So we decided that rather than pay thirty extra basis points for the call features, we would take a non-callable option and save the taxpayers and the community that those thirty basis points. And really, that's the one thing I would add, sir.
Yes, and that's a really good rate. I mean, three, three, yeah, that was fantastic rate. So once again, they came through for, for us on, on that pricing.
I should say the high bid was four point two six, so they changed, there was quite a bit of variance there.
Yes, so now it, it really did a good, good job for us, and so we're, we're excited to get started. Settlement date would be December thirtieth is what we're estimating on, on this, so we're looking forward to getting started and getting, getting on these projects and moving forward. So we're asking for approval on this ordinance, please.
Questions, Council?
Yes, Mayor. Robbie? The, we, we say this is to balance the budget, but it's not necessarily balancing our budget. We're not using this for our daily operating funds. This is stuff we went through in all of our workshops, identifying capital improvement projects that we wanted to do, the reimbursement of the, of the fire department for the, the money the, the city already spent to rehab that building. These are things that we talked about over multiple, multiple meetings and, and the workshops. This is not just to keep the lights on at City Hall in our daily operations. Oh, no, sir, no, sir. These are, these are for projects, absolutely. Sort of confirm that. Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I don't.
I move to approve item eleven as presented.
Fine, I was just gonna say I didn't have any additional questions, but you did answer the ones that I had, so I appreciate that. I was gonna ask you regarding the interest rate as well as how many bids and the redemption provision, so those were my concerns, so I appreciate you coming forward and providing that information.
Also, I'd like to point out before we get around to a motion, that if you are interested in what goes on in the city and you want to find out whether those that are against it or for it or whatever are right, come to the meetings, especially when we're having budget workshops and all. This item was in the budget, it was worked out. While the budget process was going on, when the budget was passed, this five point one million dollar bond issue was in it. So this is not a surprise to anybody, it was done right in front of the whole world, and you're welcome to come watch those things take place. And I think it's something that we need. Infrastructure is a big issue for us, we are concerned about streets, bridges, buildings, there's things that we are really concerned about that, that they are maintained and replaced with ad valorem taxes. That's what we pay taxes for, is to take care of our infrastructure. And this is a good opportunity, I'm proud to say that we're gonna get this done, and I think the rate on it looks great, and I appreciate it. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve item eleven as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve, consider approval of emergency for ordinance nineteen ninety seven, amending code of ordinances, chapter one oh two, utilities, article D, water service, deleting the content of division four drought contingency and emergency plan and replacing said division four contents by referring to and adopting a comprehensive drought contingency plan as exhibit A, as may be modified in the future by ordinance, repealing all other ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Mr. Pickarizing?
Exciting, isn't it?
It is.
Actually, I'm here tonight to amend the drought contingency plan. We were contacted by TCEQ, we had left out some verbiage that is mandatory in our plan, and I think y'all have that highlighted in y'all's packets. We're gonna be adding all the variances back in there. So that's why I'm here tonight, but all of it is about variances. Questions?
All right. Questions, Council?
Everything that's in that packet, the, the highlighted portions, talking about the, the, the variances, all that's just going back into the twenty twenty five drought contingency plan. That's, that's the.
Yeah, so we, we added it back in and then highlighted to see what, what we added. And it says how you've requested a variance for during our drought, you know, during our drought conditions right now. There is a process, it names it out, and we'll follow that process, and then it names the Public Works Director as your first main contact, and if, if I agree to, you know, grant that, that variance or deny it, then there's a secondary measure where you can go to the city manager and request it there. So it's just naming out those procedures.
And once we leave the drought conditions, when we get rain or whatever happens there, we go back to the standard variance procedures?
Yes, and then if we, we drop back down, you know, if it's, or we go up if we don't get it back.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve agenda item number twelve as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? Call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number fourteen, thirteen, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash five oh R, authorizing professional service provider election for capital selection for capital improvement projects funded and administered through the general fund for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, street improvements. Ms. Henry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We went out for bids for street engineering work for street improvements that was tied to the capital project for item number eleven earlier in the agenda. We received ten responses, and after the three individuals that were staff members that were reviewing them, we did come down to a conclusion of the highest score was Pape Dodson. Staff at this time would like to remember, recommend Pape Dodson, and allow staff to continue the process and negotiations with that engineering firm.
Questions, Council?
Just one statement, not a bid, right? Not bids, the qualifications.
Correct, I apologize. It was requests for qualifications, RFQs.
Have we used this client before? Had they ever been selected by the city of Rockport to do other engineering work? Have we, we have any history with them?
I, I have some history with them. I have some history with Pape Dodson, working with the Aransas County, engineering in our, in various projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Agenda item number thirteen as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? We will call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Item number fourteen, request to rezone the property located at thirty four eighty one State Highway thirty five bypass, also known as S three oh nine five J S and R acres, block one, lot two D, two E, two F, three point four zero five five acres, city of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B one, general business district, currently zoned R one, first single-family dwelling district.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. Property owners, C N F Land Development L L C, represented by Mr. Mark Aldresco, is requesting a rezone of the property which fronts Highway thirty five bypass. Right now it's R one, he wants to rezone to R two, I mean, B one. The B one zoning is in compliance with the future land use map. The Planning and Zoning Commission, it was approved by unanimous vote, requesting the change, we had two millions in favor for the rezone.
Okay. Thank you. Is, is the gentleman that wants to redo the property here, would he like to speak? I'm sorry? Okay. Case like that, we will conduct a public hearing on the matter. Before we go any further, we are in a public hearing on this matter. Anyone in the audience have any idea what they are doing here and want to know more about it, or want to express an opinion on the subject matter? If not, public hearing is closed. Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve item fourteen as presented.
Mayor, can you read that? Piece fourteen dash I V four? Can you read that ordinance aloud? Sorry, for the record.
Okay.
Don't he do that in the motion, or does he just need to read it?
You can do it in your motion, but yes, it needs to be, the whole ordinance has, the caption has to be read.
Mayor, I move to approve on the first and two readings, ordinance one nine nine eight, amending the official zoning map as stipulated under article four point one of the city of Rockport zoning ordinance number ten seventy two, by changing the zoning of land from R one, single-family dwelling district, for property located at thirty eight, thirty four eighty one State Highway thirty five bypass, also known as S three zero nine five J S and R acres, block one, lot two D, E, and F, three point four zero five five acres, city of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to B one, general business district, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective
Well done. Do I have a motion?
Bet that was.
Your motion? I'll second.
When you read it as part, you're very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second, sir.
I have a second. Any further debate, question, or whatever? If not, I'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. See how long this other one is. Okay. Item number fifteen, request for a conditional use permit for property located at seventeen twenty three Eighteenth Street, also known as S five nine two five Swickheimer Block two forty nine, lot part of, is this eleven hundred and eighty seven? There's a gap in here. Okay. Seven point oh five, oh four, five, eight acres, for the purpose of adding one manufactured home to replace the family home that was lost in a fire.
Due to the large fires earlier this year, the property was destroyed, the home was destroyed. They came in. Uh, they came in, uh, wanting to put a mobile home in there, manufactured home, so they had to rezone it to an R two M. However, during those meetings, uh, letters were submitted by individuals that, that spoke in opposition, uh, of developing a manufactured home park. Uh, their goal is to simply just install the one home, uh, affordably and as quickly as possible. At the October twelfth, twenty twenty five, city council meeting, the council approved to rezone to R two M, uh, so that the proper documentation could be made available so that they could get the mobile, the manufactured home out there. Uh, with the stipulations that, uh, once the cup was in place, they, they had to apply for, y'all wanted them to come back, apply for a cup, uh, and then have it rezone back to R one. So once the cup is in place, the city will initiate the process to rezone the property back to R one.
Okay. Right. Are they here to address the matter? Come right ahead.
I don't even say anything.
Okay, all right. Thank you, we heard you last time. Good to see you again. All right, questions, counsel? If there is no other, anyone else in the audience wish to address this matter? Nobody did last. Okay, we'll close public hearing. Okay. Consider approval of first of two readings, ordinance number nineteen ninety nine, granting conditional use permit for the purpose of allowing the installation and use of residential dwelling of one manufactured home on property located at seventeen twenty three eighteenth street, also known as Swickheimer block two forty six, lot part of one eighteen being seven point zero four five eight acres, city of Rockport, Rancho County, Texas, subject to compliance with conditions stated within this ordinance, as well as those stipulated in city Rockport code of ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Make a motion to approve agenda item fifteen as presented.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question?
Is everything going good with it? Do we have the?
They're, they're sitting in the line.
Good.
They're almost there.
Good.
Good.
Good to hear.
All right, we'll call for vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item number sixteen, request to rezone property located at thirty five twenty five state highway thirty five bypass, also known as S thirty ninety five J S and R acres, block one, lot two A, two B, two C, three point four zero two two acres, city of Rockport, Rancho County, Texas, from R one, first single family dwelling district to B one, general business district. Steph, you stay busy too.
Yes, so the same property owner, C N F Landis, uh, Land Development LLC, uh, wants to rezone it. It is off the bypass right next to the other property, I do believe. Uh, the B one zoning is in compliance with the future land use map. We have had two millions in a, uh, in favor. Uh, the planning and zoning commission by unanimous vote recommended to city council approval of the request, changing the zoning of land R one to B one.
All right. It's the same folks, right? If not, any member of the audience have a comment you would like to make on this particular item? If not, we'll close another public hearing. Consider approval on first of two readings, ordinance two thousand, amending the official zoning map as stipulated under article four point one, the city Rockport zoning ordinance number ten twenty seven, by changing the zoning of land from R one, first single family dwelling district for property located at thirty five twenty five state highway thirty five bypass, also known as S thirty ninety five J S and R acres, block one, lot two A, two B, two C, three point four zero two two acres, city of Rockport, Rancho County, Texas, to B one, general business district, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Counsel?
I have a question. Carrie, is this one of the ones that we talked about, that, uh, one of the subdivisions that will be, um, as we're reading the ordinance, is that going to be one of the ones that requires, uh, sidewalks and? Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Mayor, I move to approve item sixteen as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a motion and a second, any further question? We will call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Item number seventeen, request to rezone property located railroad reserve property on South End Street, also known as railroad reserve acres thirteen point five one nine, manning specifically included one hundred and fifty by eighty five R R residence, uh, R E S A D J to abstract ninety two, Jay Kittle survey, R five, second multifamily dwelling district to R two, second single family dwelling district. It's a mouthful. Steph?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. So this is the property, it's called the railroad property because that's what it was initially. But the property owner, Mr. Stuart Lynn of Sal Holdings LLC, is requesting to rezone the property to R two, second single family dwelling district in order to develop a single family subdivision, following the requirements of the R two, um, district. The planning and zoning commission met and by unanimous vote recommends approval of the rezone.
All right.
Um, they are here and they do have a presentation.
Okay.
If you'd like to see it.
Come right ahead, this is a public hearing issue on this, y'all come right ahead, give us your name and your, your location, where you live, Rockport or whatever and have at it.
Good evening, I'm Stuart, um, with the S A L Holdings, have a office here in a engineering office here in, um, Rockport. Good evening, mayor and counsel, appreciate the opportunity. We have a, two here that are on the agenda tonight, this one and one after. And this is a thirteen and a half or so acre subdivision that, um, we're looking, um, doing, um, in the development. Uh, we've been around here, Rockport for a while, I came as an engineer, bought, um, for those of you old timers, bought Mark Iced's business many, many, um, years ago, it was over there by the old city hall in the beginning. But thanks to Al Johnson, it made me a small little place, so that's how we got started in two thousand ten or so. So been here ever since on the engineering side, um, do some development up and down the coast. Been as an engineer, Brandy, in our engineering office, um, Brandy picked in, was on a few boards and wanted to do her part and help with some subdivisions. So trying to do a couple of projects on the, um, as affordable as possible, um, not, um, not low and windy stretch, but they're not the million dollar homes. So found a couple of pieces of property and we've done some development over down the coast, so we're familiar with the, um, concept. Then we have our own engineering in-house and do the infrastructure on some of some subs that we do quite a bit of work with. So that's kind of a, what we're able to do to get the prices as affordable as possible. And what this one is about is, uh, Village by the Bay is what we're calling it, seventy six home sites. About eighty percent of it is in the railroad district, the other twenty percent is already R two, so we're just asking to get the other, the railroad district part in the R two. And these are some homes very similar to ocean reef, um, and that kind of concept, thousand to twelve hundred square foot homes on ponds where they can park underneath and do that. And, um, do we have, so yeah, there's railroad reserve and a little bit south of there that, uh, what it says, four eleven, that's part of it, that's already R two. So we're asking for that big orange, um, block that's a railroad reserve to be R two as well, so we can do, um, fifty by hundred, um, lots. Happy to answer, any other questions?
Counsel, we got questions?
I forgot to mention, you have a corrected ordinance before you because we had to have the ordinance document in the packet so she could publish last week. So we, we've, we fixed it to be accurate by unanimous vote and they, they, they voted to approve, recommend approval. It's red line. That's what those changes were for.
All right. Anyone in the audience wish to address this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Will the streets remain?
Could you come up here so we can get it recorded, please, ma'am, we can record it and we'll be sure we got you? Just give us your name.
Linda Simpson. And I live on the backside of that property.
Yes, ma'am.
Will Pearl Street and Second Street be left alone? Like Pearl Street Daddy, that's right at that property.
Okay.
And that's where we live.
As far as I know, they will, there's never been any request for anything to change on them.
Yeah, I mean. There's nothing that's going, there's no, there's a, there's a big. There is a, a drainage along that Pro Street dead end and there's a big ditch right there. Yeah, we're actually having lots, they're going to back up to that and then have our detention actually go to that Pro Street.
Are they going to do anything with that ditch? As far as we know?
No.
Because it is getting out of control.
Well, we'll keep our attention on our property and then of course, running this down, we'll have to prove all that, so yes, we're not going to add any more flow to the existing ditch.
Is this a flooding issue out there is what we're talking about?
It gets all the way up to the house, but recently as the weather gets worse, it's deteriorating into the ditch, getting the ditch closer to the house. Yes, it is. No fish. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, anyone else? If not, we'll close public hearing. And I'll read some more. Consider approval on the first of two readings, ordinance two thousand one, amending the official zoning map as stipulated under article four point one of the city Rockport zoning ordinance number ten twenty seven, by changing the zoning of land from R five, second multifamily dwelling district for property located at railroad service property on South End Street, also known as railroad reserve acres thirteen point five one nine, manning specifically including one fifty by eighty five R R R E S A D J to A B S T, I'm supposing abstract, ninety two, Jay Kittle survey to B one, general business district, repealing all ordinances in conflict to R two, second single family dwelling district, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Counsel, inter- interuptively, this, you have a question? Same question, uh, this is one of the ones that, uh, if, if I'm understanding the ordinance, um, uh, and I'm not sure if these folks have got a copy of it or not, they may appreciate a copy, um, that we do, uh, require sidewalks and street lights.
Yes, sir.
In the existing ordinances and just want to make sure they were aware of that and, and would, would it in the future, as this moves along, included in their, in their, uh, plans, it'll be submitted for final approval to you?
Correct, we will, we will address that with the civil plans.
Thank you, I thought that was the case, thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I move to approve item seventeen as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Item number eighteen, request to rezone property located at eight oh two West Morgan and one fifty five Kelly Lane, also known as Jay Smith survey acres of twelve point seven oh five and acres twelve thousand five hundred out of a twenty five point oh two five acre track being the end to out of a fifty one point eight eight acre track, city of Rockport, Rancho County, Texas, from R one, single family dwelling district to R two, second single family dwelling district. Steph, again.
So this property is, um, off the market, back behind like where the dollar store and stuff is. These is, this is two lots and the property, Mr. Lynn of S A L Holdings, I'll try to say it right, I'm sorry, LLC, is requesting a rezone of the property to R two, second single family dwelling district, in order to develop a single family subdivision, following the requirements of the R two zoning. Planning and zoning commission did meet last night and, um, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezone. And the future land use map does show residential use, so it's, it's in line with that. I will say that there's actually three lots in this subdivision, but the third, um, Mr. Lynn has done a voluntary annexation paperwork. We'll be bringing that to you in January for the other part of that. Also, same thing with the ordinance, um, we have a, we have a red line copy, we had to fix it after we got the vote. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay. But the folks wanted to do that here. Anyone in the audience wish to address this particular matter?
All the same, I, I can go over the.
Okay.
Think y'all know everything. It's the one that we've done a couple of public hearings, just on this thirty three acres, twenty five, like Ms. Carrie said, twenty five is in the city. Um, the other eight will be brought to, we're doing a voluntary annexation to, maybe I'll get some tax revenue on the eight acres that's in the county. But, uh, we'll call it the, uh, the Oaks, small, um, single family type homes. Most all of it is, all of it is in, um, R one right now, so we're actually going R two to get the same fifty by hundred or five thousand square foot, um, lots. Through that, we'll have a main entrance, we'll come off of Marcus Street and then we'll have an exit on the south, um, east, um, corner on, not hood, but the street right south of there. So that's, um, we're at and that's, um, that's the Oaks, um, getting hundred sixty four lots, um, do it in several different phases. We got a couple of big, um, builders that are interested in, um, doing that and upgrade the lift station on Young Street, I believe, and upgrade some gravity lines towards Young Street to help with not only our project, but any future stuff. Since you're on the, it's all under the city limits, we're going to increase some of the, um, uh, the sewer lines too. If y'all do bring them on, y'all have some capacity for that, so been going back and forth to the, um, city staff and how that all will, um, work out. So we're excited about the project and looking forward to some next steps.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to address this matter? If not, we'll close. And read some more. Consider approval on the first of two readings, ordinance number two thousand two, amending the official zoning map as stipulated under article four point one, the city Rockport zoning ordinance number ten twenty seven, by changing the zoning of land from R one, first single family dwelling district for property located eight oh two West Morgan and one fifty five Kelly Lane, also known as Jay Smith survey acres twelve point seven oh five and acres twelve thousand five hundred out of twenty five point two oh five acre track being the end to out of fifty one point eight eight acre track, city of Rockport, Rancho County, Texas, to R two, second single family dwelling district, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Mayor, just one question for, for Mr. Lynn. Uh, this is the same track that we, we spoke about earlier in the year about trying to do some public, private partnerships or it was presented to us. You're able to still do the project without, without those, uh, contingencies?
Yes, we're going to, we're able to do the project and obviously the price point is not what we were, came originally trying to make it more affordable. Um, still going to be, um, two, two fifty to three hundred, two seventy, two seventy five to three, three twenty five, probably would be the ballpark. So we're trying to get it under the two fifty, but without any help, we just can't make it work.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you continuing to work on that project, even though we need to make it work. But I appreciate you, uh, continue to work on that.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Mayor, I move to approve item eighteen as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? We'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Number nineteen, consider approval of first of two readings, ordinance number two thousand three, amending city's water conservation plan to require formal review and renewal every five years, providing for administration, providing a severability clause, providing for conflicts, providing an effective date. Mr. Pickarazi, thank you, sir.
Mayor, counsel, uh, we have a water conservation plan now. We've, uh, been sitting on this plan, I say sitting on it, but we've been working on this plan for a little bit and, uh, we've actually, when we found out the D C P was missing some components to it, uh, we sent it to the water development board. Um, we thought we, we'd go through that process first before we brought it to council and tell you we need to change it or amend it. So, uh, we did get approval by the development board, which is great. But what we're presenting, or what I'm presenting. But what we're presenting or what I'm presenting tonight is, uh, the city recognizes the need to conserve efficiently user resources. Uh, to meet future and current, uh, demands. Uh, for this reason, the city has implemented programs to minimize water loss and waste. And also various educational outreach programs, um, are also in place. In adopting this water conservation plan, the city of Rockport, uh, will, shall. Complete the Texas, uh, development water conservation utility profile every year. Uh, set five and ten year goals, uh, for per capita water use and adopt an ordinance approving the plan. So that's why we're here tonight. Uh, this plan, hopefully y'all got it in advance. Let's start by do y'all have any questions because it's kind of robust. Do y'all, that you want me to zero in, uh, it's, it's really talking about. Water conservation goals and how city staff attacks these goals in our day to day activities. We can talk about those for a second. You know, we've approved some things in the, in the past like water valve, tapping machines and stuff that we can do. Out in the field to when we have a water line break, we can isolate those lines, kill the water so we're not leaking all day. That's one, one issue. Our A M I, uh, our A M I system. It, it has so many things that we can do. We, we can run reports weekly, uh, monthly and we do those things to catch, you know, water leaks. Uh, the utility building runs those that we can see if you're running high usage, higher than normal. So we can contact those people and say, hey, you know, are y'all doing something different? You know, are y'all watering? We use it for watering also. But we're able to, to actually catch leaks before they get out of hand and thousands and thousands of dollars and we're, we're using the water and not just wasting it. But, uh, the, this plan is what we're addressing, you know, and looking approval for any. How in depth do y'all want me to go on this?
Questions?
I've got a question on the, with the topic you just went over. Um, the, uh, you said there's, it's more of a real time situation or, or with someone, if a homeowner experiences underground leak on their property. Um, they're not aware of it. It's, it's leaking. You guys are gonna be notified and through the, the, the system.
So our utility building can look at trends on, from their meter.
Is it month by month? So, so they wouldn't get that information till the end of the month?
No, so, so we run them weekly and on all of our stuff and if we catch them, then it throws a little, or a red flag on that account. So we're able to, to contact those people and say, hey, you know, we're seeing some irregular, you know, some irregular activity going on. Do you have some, well, my toilet's leaking or, you know, we can.
I was filling the pool or something like that.
Yeah, or, you know, my kids have been out in the yard, you know, so we're able to catch those things. And that's really, it, it's helpful for.
Sure.
You know, for our consumers and, and the state of water.
Okay, so that's a, that's a weekly, uh, you're able to, to see that down weekly. That's good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Mayor, I move to approve item nineteen as presented.
I have a motion to have a second.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for vote Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye is unanimous. Item number twenty, discussion and direction on a proposal from Freeze and Nichols regarding alternate water supply options. You didn't get to sit down long.
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Counsel, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Um, Ryan, do you want me to kind of take the lead on this?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Wonderful. So, uh, I wanted to start by just commending you all, um, for having the foresight and prudence to kind of evaluate your groundwater options. And that's the, the purpose of this item here. Uh, we've, uh, had the pleasure with work, working with Ryan on y'all's, uh, water wastewater impact fee. A couple of years ago and, uh, he approached us about, um, maybe some waters, I, I, I do water planning, my name's Adam Connor, I work at Freeze and Nichols. And, uh, I'm on the central Texas water supply lead for us and that central Texas spans all the way down into, uh, Corpus Christi area. And so we put together a proposal to help you all, um, wrap your hands around, uh, what groundwater, um, exists in your, uh, immediate vicinity in the near neighboring three counties. Um, we have a team of groundwater hydrologists that, um, have done this for numerous different water utilities, um, across what we call central Texas, but, uh, we don't, we've done planning in, in your nickels too. So, um, the proposal is relatively simple. It's, uh, identified up to four potential wellfields. Um, in those counties and, uh, evaluate them, uh, compare them, see by your recommendations on which, uh, could be feasible, both fresh and brackish. So salty, slightly salty groundwater and, um, the, the schedule for this, uh, study is roughly three to four months, um, from kickoff. And you should see in your packet, I believe it's, uh, should say the fee there is at sixty six thousand. Fee. Uh, happy to field any questions and I appreciate y'all's attention. I was, um, happy to see the presentation last month, uh, that y'all got from the city and from San Pat.
Counsel, questions or observations?
Ryan, this is, uh, an engineering fee, engineering study to, to, uh. Look at potential. Well sites or, or what the opportunities may be there for us, correct?
Yeah, so following, um, the last council meeting, um, Councilman Anderson had some questions and, and so did everybody else. But had asked staff to go back and see what our options were. Um, so we reached out to Freeze and Nichols. And, uh, this, the scope of services started out something a little bit different. It was a higher, uh, amount. But it was a more robust scope and it had. Do you remember all what was on it? It had like five or six different things and. And for our area locate, you know, one of them was locate surface water availability. Well, we know what our surface water availabilities are around us. We, you know, we're in South Texas. So we eliminated a couple of things, uh, Vanessa and I did and talking with Stephanie. And I see, and so we kind of went to D cell and groundwater because I think that's what's kind of feasible around us. We saved a little bit of money, um, by condensing the scope and now we're here, you know, with council looking for direction. How far do y'all wanna take this? I mean, I think, I think this is what can be done, uh, but we have to get into the study. And, and go from there.
We need to see what our availability is before we.
And that's, and that's what the price tag is that, um, is in y'all's packet, which is, do y'all know the number sixty?
Sixty six, five or six, uh.
It's sixty six five.
Yeah, sixty six, five. And I, I know timeline was an issue because, you know, after Corpus Christi was here talking. Um, we kind of know that we're running out of time if it doesn't rain. So staff is looking at direction to take this. I know Vanessa's not here, but she really wanted to get this in front of y'all. Have Vanessa.
Um, funding or do you got, or is it gonna come utility fund or?
So it's gonna come out of reserves. That's where it's gonna have to because it isn't funded. It was not part of the budget.
It wasn't discussed.
Approved budget, so it'd be coming out of reserves and I've kind of been talking with Robbie and I think that's where he's recommending it come for, if, if we go this route. And if the timeline fits the timeline that we're thinking.
Robbie, general fund reserves or utility, like would it, would this be considered a utility fund reserve or?
Utility, yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and there, there is a possibility at the end of this that we, we don't, we just have the information.
Yeah.
We don't pull the trigger. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, everybody knows what we're getting at the end of this. But we, we never lose the information.
The, uh, uh, at the last meeting, uh, I was zooming in, I was trying to listen and, and, and what have you. It, it seemed like most of the opportunity and please, for those of you that were here, maybe you heard better than me, correct me if I'm wrong. It, it looked like most of the opportunity for future water, um, because we buy everything from San Pat, they buy it from Corpus. Um, was already being addressed on their side down there. They're, they're, uh, I'm gonna say, uh, looking to support D cell and things of that nature down there. They're looking at some substantial, uh, wells that are, I think some of them are even, are, the gentleman, if I remember right, was already beginning to drill and what have you. But none of it was, was gonna happen, uh, in the city of Rockport, uh, that I, that I recall. Um, it's, it seems like there's other folks that are already working on these, these solutions and they're, they're the people that we purchased the water from. Um, spending sixty six thousand to, uh, unless they're gonna come back and, and recommend we're gonna drill something here in Rockport. Uh, I, I don't know, guys. Uh, let me know what you think, but it seemed like that they were addressing all of these issues. They're already doing things. And the people that were doing this are the ones we purchased, currently purchased the water from.
You're correct.
And, and so this, this sixty six thousand, I mean, unless it's, and the gentleman, uh, can correct me, um, are, are they looking to give us city of Rockport ideas to come up with water here in town? Because otherwise we're just gonna keep buying it from the people we are and I don't, I don't know that that's a bad thing. I think that's probably okay because they have substantial plans in place to increase capacity. Do we wanna spend that sixty six thousand that wasn't budgeted i- i- to just tell us the people we're, we're buying it from are doing more?
Well, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, that this, this could be a standalone water source or a, or a alternate? How, I mean, how, how are y'all seeing this work out? I mean, if we have one in Ranjus County to produce for a D cell, it could be here. I mean, we don't know, but, uh.
I don't think the, the, the multiple D cells that were talked about the other night in detail, um, were, none of them happened to be here, which is fine. I mean, if they're, if they're the next county over, we can still buy from them, but, um, I just didn't know if, if spending sixty six or any amount of large amount of money that wasn't budgeted. It, unless there's something I'm not aware of, is there something that these folks are gonna come back and go, wow, we found a big well at the other end of Rockport and we recommend, uh, you know, drilling it out or what have you? If, if they're just gonna tell us to, to, to keep supporting the people we're currently purchasing from, again, I don't know that that's a, a bad way to go. I don't know that I wanna spend sixty six thousand to, to reiterate what was said the other night.
And, and we were just following through what we were asked to do.
I, I think, Ryan, i- is it, uh. I think what was asked of y'all was to see about alternate water supplies, you know, in, uh, whether it be wells or D cell or whatever it may be. I think that's what, what this study would do.
This is the proposed.
Would just say, hey, you have.
Do you have these options?
X, X number of gallons or, or whatever. The, now whether it be a standalone city of Rockport system, now we become the water supplier to the county or, or, or we supplement. Our partners at San Pat and City of Corpus, uh, however that may be, we don't know what our groundwater D cell's availability is right now. And I think that's what this study was gonna give us was, is the opportunity to, to look at o- other options in the future, uh, being our own or supplementing the partners. I think that's.
Yeah, cuz it's gonna show probably water quality testing, it's gonna show infrastructure costs and, you know, at the end of it, we may say, hey, there's available water. You know, I, I see in, in, in the proposal, they said San Pat, Refugio County, Ranjus County, you know, that's infrastructure to get it here too. So there, there's gonna be millions attached to.
And there, there is funding options out there for, you know, it, not, not for this part of it, but i- if, if something were to happen in the future, there are. Funding mechanisms to the state that I think we could, we could always attempt to, to grab at, but, uh, I, I think what we asked staff to do was to. Try to find alternate sources of water for us, um, before, before Corpus and San Pat came and made their presentation.
Yes, and, and to Art's point, uh, or he had made earlier, it's, it's even if we did have an option, it would still be five, five years, at least five years before we could. Have anything that was possible for our own consumption if we developed it here. Contractually obligated or, or, uh, that's just how long it would take for regulatory.
Regulatory.
Yeah, right. Yes, and, and to get new resources and infrastructure.
Yeah.
All, I mean, from, from the beginning point to actually getting water in your.
Yeah, so that's something that's gonna happen in six months.
That's correct.
We're not gonna turn our water on to get city of Rockport water in six months.
Right.
It'll still be Corpus, San Pat water.
Yes, which I think they were, what do you want, twenty twenty nine, if I remember right, looking at having their stuff on, so it would still be about that time to, to what you, what you're saying.
Well, that's, that, that's the D cell and everything, but they, they'll have, they have their wells online and some of the other stuff that they're supplementing.
In order to seek funding, we would need a survey like this in place, correct? A study like this to even seek funding. So this might be a requirement regardless now or in the future. How, how long would something like this stay in since valid for before it would require an updated study?
Adam, do you, you think, can you answer a question?
Sorry, the, the question was how long would it take to bring, uh, for the city to develop a, a groundwater project and have it online?
No, how long would this, uh, this study?
The study itself?
For before it would require an update of some kind?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your question. Um, yeah, we typically say every five years or sooner if, if, if conditions require. That's, you know, we, we have a lot of recurring clients in North Texas that we do regular updates for.
I, I don't think it's a, a bad use of funds for, granted, we didn't budget for it, uh, but I don't think it's a bad use of funds to see what, what other options we may have out there. Whether we act on them or not, um, at least we have an, an answer of what some of our options could be. And, and it couldn't just be supplementing the, the partnership we already have. Who knows?
Well, we haven't had to look at an issue like this in the past. The council had, in thirty years I've been, thirty five years I've been here, I haven't seen it like this. So this is an issue that everybody in the whole area of this ha- part of the state is concerned about. And I have been a huge proponent for keeping our reserves up. And I still wanna do that. But I think that considering the severity of the, of the issue as it is right now, everybody's trying to find an answer. Everybody's looking and don't know what they're gonna come up with. I agree that the San Pat Water District and Corpus Christi are doing a lot of things that may work out to help us out a whole lot. But I think it would be a wise expenditure to go ahead and have the study done, so we've got it. And I don't think that that is a bad. Thing to use fifty six thousand dollars out of our reserves for.
As long as, uh, uh, because the, the presentation we looked at the other night, I thought was very informative, uh, and what have you. I don't know if this, if this, these folks, Freeze and Nichols that are helping us with this are potentially gonna be helping us with this. You know, I just don't want them to come back and go, yeah, D cell's the way to go, you know, we got that information the other day. I'd be more interested in, in something local like Brad was talking about with. Maybe we get lucky and there's a, we find a, a big aquifer under us or something like that and, and then we could explore that. I just, uh, I wanna make sure that they, they can take a little bit of, uh, uh, direction from us possibly of, of where we want them to look. Because we already know D cell's in process. It's gonna happen somewhere south of us most likely and, and it's gonna happen and they're, they're gonna do it whether we are on board or not. We're gonna buy from San Pat. That's where they're gonna sell to them. So that's our, that's kind of a moot point. Um, is, do we have the ability to ask them which direction to look towards?
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, not physical direction, you know what I mean? But we, in, in this proposal, I know their staff, their staff meetings, we're gonna have to go through and, you know, and actually. Figure this out together. I, I've never done one, um, so if we go this route, then we're gonna dive, you know, we're gonna get our money's worth and, and figure out some problems and, and know and answer. Um, and build off of that.
And I don't think there's any way we're, let's barring some miracle, we're ever gonna stop purchasing from San Pat. It's a, it's a bargain. They do a great job and, and then they're doing, uh, things immediately now to increase capacity. Art, um, and then put you on the spot. We're, there's nothing in the contract, uh, uh, that you're aware of that would disallow us to supplement. Let's just say we found a big, these, these gentlemen do this r- r- report, comes back with, we've got the ability to do a small, uh, you know, D, uh, small water system here in the city of Rockport. Uh, like a lot of other municipalities out around here have, we're, we're not prohibited, uh, because we're still gonna buy the majority from them that you're aware of.
Yeah, I, I, uh, subject to check.
Sorry to put you on the spot for that one there.
Check. I don't recall there being any, any such prohibition.
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody has any interest in, in stopping D and doing business with them and especially they've done a good job. But if these folks are gonna look and find some supplemental things that we can do for, you know, plan B emergency water systems or just supplemental water systems. As long as we're contractually allowed to do that, I think that'd be a good thing.
I think, uh, recently the news, uh, two of our, surround, two of our partner cities that, that also. Get water from the same water sources, uh, they're all trying to work as a partnership into, okay, I don't need this much water. Now you can have some, you know, there's some give and take and, and some sharing of water. Uh, whereas, uh, a new water, a new D cell plant just came online using brackish water, they're now supplementing the city of Corpus with some water. So to alleviate some of the, the surface water, uh, constraints. So to alleviate some of the, the surface water, uh, constraints. So I mean, I, I think it's still a good idea and I.
You know, and just reiterating, we work, we deliver water. We don't treat water. So, so this would be totally different for the City of Rockport. We don't have those facilities, you know, and we don't have that staff. So anything that we do, it's, it's going to, it's going to add staff and it's going to add the equipment and the expertise because, you know.
If the report comes back and says.
We get treated water and we deliver it.
So Mayor and Council, if y'all, y'all, y'all don't mind, I'd just like to offer you, uh, some information as this data to help you in your decision-making. We have, Freeze and Nichols has an office in Corpus and we, we have, uh, close connections with folks at the City of Corpus. And if it was y'all's desire, we definitely could coordinate with them on the groundwater studies that they're doing, making sure that we're not stepping on anyone's toes. Um, but I see the benefit of your study to be, they're looking at a pretty large groundwater project. And as you've said, several members have said, there might be something that's a little bit closer and, and right-sized for you all that we find that, uh, could be the better solution for y'all.
I don't think that we can solve all the issues and deal with the water right now. But I, the, the question for us is do we want to spend money to have these folks that have already worked with our water system and know it to come up with a proposal that we can use in case worse comes to worse and we don't get water anywhere else that we have a place to get it? So I would entertain a motion on the subject.
Mayor, I'm ready. Uh, Robbie asked for my motion. I just want to confirm that we're going to be using, uh, utility reserve funds. Would, would that be correct to state in the motion?
Yes, sir. Appropriate reserves. And I, I'd bring, I'd bring back as a separate, uh, agenda item to, to, to do that for council vote.
Do you need that in the form of the motion to, to say how we're funding it or anything?
No, I don't think so. We're going to have to deal with it as it comes. We'll let it find out what.
Well, Mayor, I just, uh, I, I move to approve item twenty, uh, to approve the proposal from Freeze and Nichols, uh, to provide us an alternate water supply study.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question? Not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Mayor, aye is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
Do you have a city manager that, that, she leave anything for you?
She did not leave anything for us, um, sir, but I was trying to see if she was available online because she is on there. I don't see anything coming through from her on here.
She may be thinking I have the night off. All right, reports from council.
Hello?
We hear you.
Y'all, I'm sorry, I can barely hear y'all. Do y'all need me?
Hello, I see you.
Just your city manager's report.
I, I've got nothing for y'all. We're in, um, Nacogdoches for a finance in-depth training and I'm going to be bringing some stuff back. Robbie's going to love me on Monday. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Report from council. Ward one.
I've been able to enjoy a lot of the hos- uh, holiday festivities so far in downtown and surrounding areas. So I encourage everyone to go out, check your local calendar. There's a lot of things going on, um, for both kids as well as adults. So, um, nothing additionally to report beyond that. I hope everyone has a good, safe holiday and see you in January.
Ward two.
I had the, uh, opportunity, uh, to be invited to, to be in the parade we did the other night. Several other members up here were with us. I think the second year I got to do that and, uh, just fantastic turnout. The, uh, the folks over that take care of the, uh, the, I was going to call it a float with the golf cart, did a wonderful job again, making us look good there and, uh, just, it was really goo- good to see the turnout, the, the children. Uh, the weather was a little better this year. We all didn't, uh, didn't get frostbite. But, um, just a great turnout there and I appreciate, uh, being invited to participate in that. And just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone in City of Rockport and Ward two.
Ward three.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I too attended the, uh, the parade and our, our guys at the fleet department take great care of us and make us look really, really good on that golf cart. I mean, I think our definitely look better than the police chief's car, but, you know, uh, whatever. No, it was, it was great turnout for the parade. So much so, we ran out of candy before the end of the, end of the, uh, parade. We weren't expecting that many people there. So that's a good problem to have, uh, I think. Uh, we'll know next time to, uh, to get more and, or throw less, one of the two. I want to commend the city staff, the Parks Department, uh, and the tropical Christmas, uh, everything they're doing, uh, that they did last weekend down, down on the festival grounds and, uh, also Christmas on the beach is looking great. Uh, also commend, uh, the Cultural History, everything downtown looks awesome. Uh, people that I've talked to are really excited about it. Everybody's in the Christmas spirit. Hopefully they're writing checks to, to businesses and spending all their money down there. Hopefully we'll be able to see some, some, some good for the businesses downtown, uh, and for the city. Uh, I think everybody's got the spirit. It looks great down there and I'm, I'm, I'm proud to be part of it. So I just want to also wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll get to see y'all in January.
Wasn't nearly as cold this year for the parade as it was last year. We got a little bit cool, but it wasn't bad. It was really nice. This being the last meeting before Christmas, I want to say Merry Christmas to all of you. Whether you read about it somewhere or you're online listening or whatever. And God bless all of you. Give you a wonderful, wonderful Christmas this year. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion.
Second.
We are adjourned. It is six seventeen.